Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 meeting of the Arroyo Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George.
Here.
Councilmember Barnish.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here.
And Councilmember Secrest is absent.
Would you silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And would you please join me in the flag salute? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that takes us right into item five, agenda review. Does anyone have any reason to reorganize our super-long agenda? Okay, then we'll proceed as published. We have no closed session announcements tonight and no ordinances on the agenda, so that takes us straight into items six, our special presentations. And the first one is our honorary proclamation declaring October 6th through 12th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week. And Chief Hallett, I know you're in the House somewhere. Would you meet me at the podium? Hi, gentlemen. So nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Glad to have you safe from fire season. This is an honorary proclamation declaring October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, whereas the city of Arroyo Grande is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Arroyo Grande, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. Whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape freely, safely. And whereas Arroyo Grande residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas the Five Cities Fire Authority is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Arroyo Grande residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme of "Smoke Alarms: Make Them Work For You" serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russum, Mayor of the city of Arroyo Grande, do hereby declare October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urge all the people of Arroyo Grande to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and support the many public safety activities and efforts of our local fire department, the Five Cities Fire Authority. With that, Chief Hallett, I'll turn it over to you.
My on? Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just a little history on Fire Prevention Week. It began in the early 1920s to commemorate the 50th anniversary of two historic fires, the Great Chicago Fire and the Pestigo Fire. Both of these fires started on October 8th, 1871, and caused significant loss of life, destroyed properties, and burned millions of acres. Fire Prevention Week has been officially sponsored by the National Fire Protection Agency since 1922 to raise awareness and promote public education and fire safety throughout our nation. In conjunction with Fire Prevention Week, you will also see and hear the fire departments participating in the Alicia Ann Rue Burn Relay, the week of Fire Prevention Week. The Alicia Ann Rue Burn Foundation was founded in 1971 to raise awareness of the risk of fire, and more importantly, have been actively involved in providing support to burn survivors. The FCFA, Firefighters Association, will once again be making a sizable donation this year to support the burn camp, which is a summer camp for burn victims. And I believe it's Captain Leathers here? Captain Leathers, can we have you step into the room for a second? I just want to acknowledge Captain Leathers, who's been coordinating the burn relay in San Luis County for a number of years, and we're very appreciative for the support that he's provided. That it's a lot of coordination with all the fire departments in the county. We do expect that burn relay to visit some schools here in the Five Cities area. And the burn relay will be on October 10th. And lastly, to finish off Fire Prevention Week activities, the FCFA will be hosting an open house on October 12th from 10:00 to 1:00 at Fire Station 1 here in Arroyo Grande, and we encourage all the families to attend and enjoy the activities that we have planned. At 10 o'clock, we'll start the event with the national anthem and presentation of the colors by our own Arroyo Grande Police Department Honor Guard. And throughout the day, we'll have a fire prevention trailer, bounce house for kids. The County Office of Emergent Services will be present, as well as the Friends of Five Cities Fire. We'll have a booth there with information on defensible space and the Ready, Set, Go program. And of course, we'll have free food and beverages, and I want to thank and acknowledge Engineer Lo Presti for organizing that event for us as well this year. So we hope to see everybody there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Item 6B is the introduction and oath of office of new police officers. This evening, we are welcoming Bradley Pollan and Vincent Spencer. So Chief, so excited to have you and the team here.
It's red. Perfect. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I think by now you know how much of an honor it is for me to introduce new police officers to our organization. I think it's important that I point out that this law enforcement industry, if you're a lateral police officer, at this point, you really have your pick of the litter of wherever you want to go in the state. There's not a, it's hard for me to even think of a single agency in the whole state of California that is not currently hiring lateral police officers. So tonight is extremely special for me personally, and hopefully for the city as well, is that we were able to recruit, or at least have two individuals, that decided to join the Arroyo Grande Police Department coming from other police agencies. And tonight, I'd like to introduce both of those gentlemen. I'll start off with Officer Bradley Pollan. He's originally from New Zealand and moved to California to complete his undergrad degree at the University of California, Santa Barbara. Bradley fell in love with the Central Coast so much, he managed to stay and work for the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Barbara County for the next six years. After gaining American citizenship, he moved to Slow County to start a career in law enforcement with the Pismo Beach Police Department, where he worked for the past five years. During his time with the Pismo Beach Police Department, he held the position of field training officer and sometimes worked as a shift supervisor. He currently lives in Pismo Beach with his pit bull terrier named Zuka. Bradley is very excited to continue his career with the Arroyo Grande Police Department and is looking forward to transitioning to the role of school resource officer in the near future. Bradley, if you wouldn't mind coming up? The next officer I'd like to introduce is Officer Vincent Spencer. He is a dedicated law enforcement professional with many years of public service. Born and raised in Visalia, California, he made the move to Arroyo Grande in 2015, seeking a more family-oriented lifestyle. He is married to his wife Jennifer, with whom he shares two children, Seth, 14, and Olivia, 6. His law enforcement career began in 2011 with the Porterville Police Department, where he not only performed his patrol duties, but also volunteered as an explorer advisor, mentoring young individuals interested in the law enforcement career. After relocating to the Central Coast, Officer Spencer lateraled to the Santa Maria Police Department. During his nearly eight years there, he actively participated in significant events, including the Monocito Fire and Mudslide Mutual Aid and the 2020 Los Angeles Riots. His commitment to professional development led him to become a field training officer and a mobile field force instructor, roles that highlight his leadership and experience. Believing strongly in the importance of family and community, Officer Spencer sought a position with the Arroyo Grande Police Department to serve the community in which he has resided for almost a decade. In his spare time, Officer Spencer enjoys traveling with his family and discovering new dining experiences. He also loves barbecuing, enjoys beach bonfires, and watching movies, cherishing the moments spent with his family. With that said, Officer Spencer, if you wouldn't mind coming up? And we would like to begin the oath of office.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Vincent Spencer.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm
I solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I am about to enter
Congratulations.
Can this badge? So Officer Black and Officer Pollan went to the academy together. So there's a little special moment here with the badge pinning. Perfect. Thank you.
Those are always the best special presentations. All right, welcome, gentlemen, to the family of Arroyo Grande and the family of our PD. This takes us to item 6C, City Manager Communications. And our city manager is away at conference, so we have Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director, Bill Robison, here tonight.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So we have a few updates for your council and for the public. The first is the next virtual town hall regarding our E24 sales tax measure will take place on October 8th at 12 o'clock. And again, it's a virtual, it's a Zoom meeting. Members of the public are welcome to join, hear information about the proposed sales tax measure, and ask questions. We've already had one. It was Thursday, September 19th, and that was a very, very productive and positive meeting. The city will have a booth that's associated with the sales tax measures, the E24 booth at the Harvest Festival on Friday and Saturday. And we encourage people to come by and say hi to our city staff. On the recreation note, our Harvest Festival movie night is this Friday, and we have a fun little flyer from Rec. They always have fun flyers. The movie is If, and again, it's September 22nd, Friday, September 27th. And the movie starts at 7:30, and it's in Heritage Square Park. We usually have a lot of people come, a lot of families, and it's a really, really nice time. The diaper derby for the kiddos up to three years old is at 12:00 PM on Saturday at the Rotary Bandstand in Heritage Square Park. Thank you. There we go. And we also have this flyer here attached that shows the activities and events for the Harvest Festival. So please check that out. We have a lot of great things that are happening. It's always a really fun event, and we look forward to the same this year. Our Community Development Department has an active transportation plan, also known as ATP. It's a community workshop this Thursday, September 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the evening. It's going to be here in the council chambers. The public can learn about the ATP and provide input and draft, on draft recommendations that we have, ask questions about the ATP, and share experience with walking, riding bicycles, and using mobility aid devices in the city. So it's about how people circulate through our city, and they can participate in that plan, enjoy refreshments and activities for children. There will also be a Spanish interpreter provided if needed. And then lastly, our Wireless Telecommunications ordinance. That was heard at our planning commission on September 17th, and it's continued off calendar to address some proposed changes by the PC, by the planning commission. We anticipate the second PC hearing in mid-October. And that concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there's questions from council. I have a quick one. Do you have, how many people attended that first Measure E community workshop?
There were six, but some of those were staff, so there were, there were three community members.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Maybe they'll come to the next one. Okay, good. All right, I'm seeing people sneaking out here, so I'm killing a little time to let them get out. Thank you so much. All right. This takes us to City Council Reports, item seven. So for mine tonight, I am first. For number one, California Powers Insurance Authority, that meets if for July, so that clearly did not meet. For Five Cities Fire Authority, we had a special meeting, and it was very short. Literally, I believe it was nine minutes long. And that was simply to affirm the, some paperwork for LAFCO for the agreement with Oceano. San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting, Mayor Pro Tem attended on my behalf. And the South San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District's meeting for September was canceled, so we will have our next one at our regularly scheduled meeting at the first week of October. So with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie.
All right, thank you. So starting with Water Resources Advisory Committee did not meet this month. Council of Governments, in this case, it was the RTA, also a very short meeting. In fact, nothing but consent. I will just, I think I've mentioned this before, but we did get funded for three more electric buses. So we have one running on 12, and we have three more coming in the next couple of years. Fully paid for, all taken care of. And good news, I mean, the very first test of these, they couldn't make it up, literally couldn't make a single trip up the grade, but the new ones apparently just roar up the grade. So they're getting better. And sort of on the bad news side, we are still not meeting our Fairbox recovery rate. We're now getting into the, what I call the test period for whatever penalty might be out there for not doing that. So there'll, there'll be some sort of action coming. I don't know if the state will let us slide, or we'll have to figure out something there. I did go to the 3CE meeting. It's one of the major meetings in adopting their budget. A lot of stuff in there, but I think the key item here is that residential rates for residents of AG will be still 14% less than PG&E rates. So they're still the best deal there, but they're still going up considerably. I think they're still going up 20%. But the big thing that people are going to see on their bill is not the increase in rates for electricity direct, but what they call the distribution costs. I think we've all heard about this. I think it's going to be up to as high as $30 a month, just for, just to pay for the the service to come in before you've used any electricity. So that part has gone up considerably. That's payment for a lot of the wildfire work that's going places, mostly in Northern California, but we're all having to pick that up.
So is that from PG&E then? Because it's distribution.
Right, PG&E, yeah. But on most people's bills, don't even realize which part is three. It all comes from PG&E, just so people are aware that that particular fixed charge is not part of 3CE. There are a lot of opportunities for residential, especially on batteries here. So as I've mentioned, a whole lot of focus on being able to delay electric, redirect the time of distribution. That's become the most expensive part, as the state is now requiring that 3CE do what's called a slice of day. You can deliver your worst hour of the year. You have to have enough electricity to cover your worst hour, which is, or highest electrical year. I mean, that's not your worst hour. But at any rate, it's very expensive to find it. Now, of course, everybody has to do it, so it's very competitive. So the price of those peaker plants and those kinds of things has just skyrocketed. So also significant city opportunities. I know our city manager was at this meeting as well, and I think we'll see the city, there are opportunities for, there's of course, electric vehicle opportunities, but even things like chargers, which in anticipation of that, and even public chargers are things that they are very much prepared to help us with as well. IWMA, nothing terribly exciting there. We did decide not to do any legislative platform, given the history of the industry, of that agency. So probably, you know, we don't want another paper bag fiasco, or plastic bag fiasco, so no legislative.
The state's taking care of it.
There we go. Well, and we did have another technical assistance grant. I'm glad to hear that staff has now put in for one of those. This is where you can demonstrate, for instance, like, these were all around doing water faucets in public parks, where you can fill your water bottle instead of a plastic bottle. So basically, we'll essentially pay for, essentially pay for the whole thing. Thanks.
The community out there is.
Got it. I know. I'm working on it. Maybe I should have a little square here. And then finally, the mayor's meeting. We did have a presentation from the Wildfire Institute, which is out of Cal Poly. A lot of really scary stuff about what's going to happen with insurance. You know, obviously, insurance is going to go up considerably because of all of the losses, but also the thing that they are working on is that there's really no method to assess risk, particularly when fire really no method to assess risk, particularly when fires start to be going structure to structure, when you start reaching that point where it's not burning on the periphery or burning a couple of homes out on the edge, but it's actually jumping from house to house, there's actually very little study on what kinds of measures you could take to protect your house, and how effective they are. So that's one thing they're working on a lot, there's, I guess you could say fortunately, not a lot of history out there to look at, but there's going to be a lot more history in the future, and that's a very difficult thing for insurance companies. And Reach, I did go, we did just have a, I guess, an appreciation, happy hour, for lack of a better word for Reach, and really, really phenomenal things that they are doing, but nothing I haven't reported on before. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barnich.
Thank you, am I in the right, Jessica, the right frame, or whatever the new thing is, okay. Let's see, the Homeless Services Oversight Council met, that was on September 18th, and sort of the biggest thing that's, I guess, relevant to Aurora Grande is that we voted to recommend a grant from earned interest for a pilot overnight parking program for individuals living in their vehicles. So according to the 2024 point in time count, 25% of unsheltered individuals are living in their vehicles. They, so staff comments were basically, while the five-year plan recommended expansion and replication of the Oklahoma Avenue Parking Program, staffs recommending changes, as we all know, to that model to enhance effectiveness. So these changes would include overnight parking only with housing-focused case management and services provided to participants from the start, which is different, a little different than the Oklahoma model. The need for a program has not changed, even though there were issues with Oklahoma Avenue, since the closure of it, there's only one formal parking program in the county, and that is with 40 Prado, and it maintains a significant waiting list, and then we had some information from CAPSLO that was at the meeting, there's 140 households that are on the waiting list for the CAPSLO parking program. According to CAPSLO, it's pretty successful, because it does have the housing and the navigation services attached to it, and that's why they feel that it's so, so successful compared to other programs that have not been successful. And they also said that a smaller group works better, they have max 12 cars at Prado, and 30 of those households that have come into the program have gone into permanent housing and retained it. So it is very successful, but you kind of have to have really intense case management, and you have to keep the program small. So the grant would, they don't really have, they're first trying to allocate the money, 227,000, they don't know who would necessarily take this on yet, but they just are trying to secure the grant, and then they're going to see if perhaps a nonprofit wants to pick it up and manage it, or they don't know yet, that wasn't, it was just us allocating that we agreed with, we agreed with starting a pilot program for, with the county kind of heading that up. Does that make sense, you're looking at, okay?
I was waiting for the part where you said the county was doing it.
Yeah, well, they did mention that they'd like the cities to collaborate, because it would be throughout the county, but I think the key is, there would be one person managing it that knows how to manage it, I think is what it's all about. Then I attended the Zone 3 meeting on September 19th, Lopez Lakes, 95% full, fourth quarter budget status is tracking mostly normally, there are some items that are over budget due to the January storms, but we hope to get about $300,000 back from FEMA, because there's mudslides and debris that slid into the reservoir, and the surface water coming in during those storms, and so FEMA is supposedly going to give most of that money back to us, and then we'll kind of be back on, back within our budget. And that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember George?
I have no report out, thank you.
And Councilmember Seacrest is absent. So that brings us to item 8, Community Comments and Suggestions, this is your chance to come talk to the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please note that you need to come to the dais with one minute or less and address the council as one body. So if you would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda, now's the time, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Eileen Lowe, is this on? Do I have to start it? You start it, thank you. I am also running for the district, the brand-new District 2 seat vacancy on the city council, and I would just like, again, I'm bringing another minute of gratitude, I attended the Swinging Bridge Ceremony on September 13th, it was a lovely event, it's wonderful to see the kind of progress that the city has done to preserve our historic features, very, you know, a gem really of the village, and bringing it on time and in budget is quite commendable, and this is a great example of what I feel like this city represents, is really lifting the community up, bringing the community together, and taking good care of our resources, and being prudent with our dollars. So I want to thank you very much, and I want to invite folks at the Harvest Festival, I'll be there with a booth, and so I look forward to meeting folks, so come on by the booth, thank you.
Anyone else?
This is a question regarding, regarding one of the council communication items, but there was a comment section for that one. I remember a few months ago, there was a Safe Place to Park bill that had come to council, however, it had been sent back with comment, and city staff was recommending to cancel it. My question is, what state is that bill in, and does that connect at all to the Safe Place to Park program that Barnich was talking about?
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Victor, and I, two weeks ago, I started a series on natural law, and I got as far as morality. People tend to fear what they don't understand, a lot of people shy away from morality because they think it's a bunch of rules and regulations and do's and don'ts. Under natural law, there's only one do and one don't. Why? Because morality is simply understanding the definitive, objective difference between right and wrong, and doing what's right. But how are we supposed to know what's right unless we have a clear definition? Have you ever heard a human right defined? I am going to share with you what I think is the most definitive, accurate definition of a human right that I've ever heard, and I challenge anybody to find a better one. A human right is any action that does no harm creates no victim. It's that simple. Any action that does no harm creates no victim is a right. What's not a right? I don't have time to tell you, two weeks, I'll be back, thank you.
So as you know, my name is Gia Powell, and I'm against your violation of my civil rights to freedom of speech, so I will be speaking less than three minutes, but I do have some questions and comments regarding the tourist business industry district, so I've gone, I've attended many of these meetings the last few years, and for years, the T-Bid Advisory Board has previously occupied, was previously occupied and considered, by considered and approved applicants. I was denied consideration by the city due to my voice and concerns regarding its management and conflicts of interest. Following my complaint, the city manager at the time, and mayor, the city council decided to change the process to an appoint E-T-Bid Advisory Board, with the mayor and city council members deciding who gets to be appointed. If the board is to remain unbiased and make thoughtful, independent decisions, then they should not be influenced by the mayor, city council member, or city council members. The T-Bid Advisory Board should be an independent committee.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Yet the city staff encourages the board to consult with the city council.
Your time is up.
Regarding T-Bid business, even with those in the city council, even when.
Okay, I'm advising you that you're disrupting a city meeting, and we're going to go ahead and turn off the mics and take a five-minute break. All right, thank you, the council is back from break, and we will go ahead and resume public comment, this is for items not on tonight's agenda, so if you would like to come speak on items not on tonight's agenda, please do so, and keep your comments to one minute or less.
Hello, hello, okay. Michael Punzalon, I'm just going to read another article from gaysagengsgroomers.com, great website, gaysagengsgroomers.com. "When citizens are allowed to speak and voice their concerns and grievances, things can change. Thankfully, gays against groomers is experiencing victories all over our nation. Gender queer radicals seeking to deny parents their rights and to force everyone to play along with delusional identity labels and medical malpractice are losing their battle to sexualize and abuse children. An important victory was just achieved against this child abuse in Huntington Beach. The mayor and city council voted to pass a parent's right to no ordinance. The goal is to protect against Governor Newsom and his political puppets unjust laws that allow and encourage teachers and the school administrators to keep secrets from parents regarding their children's sexuality and health. Although the teachers are qualified to know what is best for each child they teach, complete insanity. What if a child is harmed or commits suicide without a parent knowing their child was struggling? Who will be held accountable?
Thank you very much for your comments.
And how are teachers to know psychiatry without specialized medical training?
Thank you very much for your comments, your time is up.
Critical thinking, and ultimately, just do the right thing and follow Huntington Beach's.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Colleen Martin, and I am currently the president of Luciemar Unified School District School Board. It's election season, political signs are everywhere. At the August 20th and September 3rd school board meetings, during public comment like this, Mike Fuller, a school board candidate, implored the school board to make sure everyone running for school board followed the local political sign rules. In reality, Mr. Fuller and his Two Moms for Liberty cohorts have installed signs throughout Aurora Grande that are not in compliance with local ordinance. In spite of our best efforts to inform city staff to enforce the local ordinance, these candidates are openly snubbing their noses at the rules. If the rule-breaking candidates can't follow the local sign rules, how can we trust they will be capable of following state and national education rules affecting the education of our children? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no one in chambers, let's check in with our city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, we do have one raised hand from Randy. Okay, Randy, you're able to speak, unmute yourself.
Excellent, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Quickly here, I'm lucky enough to live right across from Aurora Grande Street, where they are removing the old gauge. The downside of that is, we are looking at street closure in front of our house, along that whole street, and as of today, sidewalk closure. I don't know if the city is involved in this project, but if they are, I'd like some information on the schedule, and what can be done about closing the sidewalk in the street during non-work hours and through the weekends, which, there is no work in the street, so it doesn't present any hazard to anybody, and certainly from a pedestrian standpoint. So hopefully someone can get back to me on that, thank you.
Okay, there are no other raised hands.
All right, so I'll. All right. So I'll close public comment. We have two questions out there for Assistant City Manager, Mr. Robison. I think they're both in your wheelhouse, actually, or one is community development. The first one, Alexandria asked about the safe parking, and I remember that that came back to council and on recommendation from staff that we decided to not go forward with that, but she brings up a good point, that how does that dovetail with what the Homeless Services Oversight Council is doing?
Well, we're still monitoring and watching the, how the county's handling the safe parking. You're correct, though, on the city's stance, at least currently, but we're still flexible and trying to be nimble on that, and we will continue to be open to that possibility. Our community development director has talked to me about it a few times. It's a topic that we, that's still on top of our list. But at this point, we're waiting to see how things transpire with the county.
Thank you. And the second question about the sidewalk closure on, it's on Myrtle Street. There's a, it just appeared today. I didn't know, obviously, that was my half. I didn't know he was calling in. There's a big orange sign that says the sidewalk is closed until further notice.
Yeah, we will check in with the contractor to see if that's absolutely necessary and why they need to close it. So we can get some information, you know, first thing in the morning and let your council know and.
I can pass it on. I know the guy.
Okay. Okay, we can do that and supply some more information.
Great. And we can also get some information out, because a lot of people walk that neighborhood with their dogs and all of that. So closing that sidewalk's kind of a big deal.
Sure. Yes, I agree.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. All right. So.
Yes, just real quick on that same subject. The postman today said he couldn't deliver the mail because the mailboxes were blocked. And so I said, so what should we do? And he said, I don't know. We got to figure it out. So anyway, they are kind of blocked during mailtime, but I feel like then they open back up. So, I mean, I think for a day or so, it's not a big deal. But if it's, I know the project's like six weeks, six more weeks, so.
That's true. So what we'll do is coordinate with the contractor to make sure that, one, that the sidewalk absolutely has to be closed, and then, or it does not, and then that the mail delivery is accessible. So yes, we'll do that in the morning.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? All right. This takes us to items nine collectively. This is our consent agenda, items nine A through, we have a bunch of them tonight, nine J. So does anyone have any questions about any of those items or anything you'd like to pull for separate consideration?
If we could pull nine C just for a quick comment.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then we will let you go first for nine C.
All right. So first, I would, this is the item, the appointment for the architectural review. So first, I'd like to thank CJ Horstman for the almost two years he's put on, on the board. As we know, that, that particular board can be very busy, and probably has been even busier than the planning commission. So I want to thank him for that, and I do want to welcome Fernando Garcia, who has many years of experience in this city. And now you'll be on the other side of that table. So I look forward, I know he'll do a great job for us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then let's go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment on items nine A through nine J. Anyone in house?
Hello, I am Alexandria Davis. I am on consent agenda, item nine D. I just wanted to say thank you all for the nomination, and I hope I'm able to serve the city well.
Thank you. Anyone else? See if there's any comments online. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands. All right. We'll close public comment and bring us back to the council for consideration and possible adoption.
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of items nine A through nine J.
Oh, I.
Second.
And under discussion, I invented a phantom level in number J. That's because I'm not wearing my glasses, so I'm sorry. We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnich?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes. Welcome, Alexandria. Welcome, Fernando, to the team. We're glad to have you.
Lots of team additions tonight. All right. Blessedly, this takes us to item 10 for public hearings. We have none. Business items, we have none. So we go straight to council communications. Does anyone have communications to share?
Just super excited about the Harvest Festival.
Yeah.
This weekend, this Friday and Saturday.
I know we had fire in the house today, and we had PD in the house today, and we're always grateful for them, but you can't be as grateful for them as when you actually need them. So I just wanted to publicly thank our fire department, who showed up to my house two weeks ago to help my mom. They were kind, they were considerate, they were caring, and it was just really nice to feel safe. So thank you to our fire department.
Yeah, so I'll just echo, nobody's happier to see the Harvest Festival come to fruition than me. I'm looking forward to Sunday. Well, except for maybe, maybe Fernando's even more excited to see Sunday. But just to remind everybody, four o'clock on Friday, parade's at 10:00. Parking, as usual, will be an issue, so think about alternative ways of getting here. Carpool, ride your bike, look at some other ways of attending this year. But we, let's just say we have a full house. We thought, we anticipated actually being a little smaller this year, and now it looks like, as far as vendors go, it's going to be bigger than ever. We have, instead of three, two bands, we have three this year, so everything about is a little bit bigger. So looking forward to it. Hope everybody can make it.
Excellent. This one's the for us, by us party of the year. So thank you to all the people who work so hard to make that happen and don't get paid a dime to do it. So we really appreciate it. A couple of those people are sitting in the, in the audience tonight. So thank you to the Garcia family, and thank you to everyone else who's on that committee who's making that happen. That is not the city that does that. That is volunteers that do that. So thank you to them. We will see you all on Friday and Saturday this week, and until then, it'll be two weeks till our next agenda, our next meeting here at city council. With that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.